I'm going to call the City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
Counselor Pishanary.
All right, it sounds like the Counselor Pishanary is still trying to get in, so we will get him up here as soon as, as soon as he's available. We have one work session item tonight, which is the City Council and Springfield Police Advisory Committee Joint Meeting. And I think we've got Chief Shear for the staff here.
Good evening, I'm Andy Shear, the interim Chief of Police here at Springfield. Mr. Mayor, my plan here tonight is to do a brief introduction and I'm going to defer to the committee. So as the Police Department's Management Liaison to the Springfield Police Advisory Committee, I want to introduce SPAC Chairperson Barry Lind. I look forward to their presentation tonight of the annual report to council. And I want to thank them for the, the hard work that they've put in just during my short time here at the city and along before that as well. So I look forward to hearing the report.
All right, thank you, Chief. So before we get started, before I turn it over to Barry, I, I just wanted to say thank you to the S-PAC for joining us remotely. I know that we all wanted to be in the same room together, but we, we still are, still are kind of meeting in one, one foot in the, the hybrid world and one foot in person. So thank you guys for being flexible with the timing and the spacing to make this happen. Barry, I'm going to turn it over to you. I know that you guys have some discussion items that you want to cover with us. So if you want to get started or, and we're ready to go.
I wonder if it's worthwhile for the SPAC to take a moment, just those who are here to introduce themselves, does that helpful? Or should we just dive in?
Oh, that would be great.
So, I'm Barry Lind, I'm Chair representing the faith and faith community of Springfield. If the rest of the SPAC would introduce themselves, that would be wonderful, thank you.
I'm Michael Bean, I am a long-term SPAC member, I used to be on with Merrily. And I think I'm the business community when I last checked.
I'm Mary Dawn, I'm Member Large and Vice Chairman, thank you.
I'm Brittany Delacante and I am the Cultural Minority Community Representative.
Hello, I'm Carla Berg, I, this is my first year on S-PAC and I am a Member at Large.
And I'm Eric Adams, Representative of Willamette.
Good evening, I'm Jen McCully and I am the Springfield Schools Representative.
I'm Adam Jenkins and I am also Neighborhood at Large, first time on S-PAC.
Hey, my name is Jonathan Hayes, I'm a firefighter fanatic with the city, I'm a at-large member.
I believe that's the SPAC that is joining us, if I'm seeing everyone. So, apologize if I'm going in the wrong direction. I'm not, this is first time chairing this committee and then first time with the joint meeting. We did, SPAC had a team of three, which was Michael and Brittany and Jen, really worked hard at a work session to provide, first of all, a summary of how we had spent the last year and that's presented in that annual report. Again, very detailed covering from month to month meetings, going from, I think, quarterly meetings to monthly. And that's all detailed in there and why we made those choices and what we had hoped to accomplish during that time. We have set as one of our goals for this year is to set some goals. There were some that were stated, but we hadn't had a chance to work through them as a, as a committee. So we're going to be taking that on as one of our commitments as we start moving into the, this year. What are the goals that we want to accomplish as a SPAC? And in all honesty, hearing from the council could be helpful in giving us some direction for that as well. I think we would be open to that. Beyond that, we had quite a discussion and, and thoughts and ended up just with really a couple of thoughts as far as next steps and discussion. One of the recommendations that SPAC was asking City Council to potentially consider was overseeing a, a public process for consideration in the implementation of a police oversight commission or a similar body, the thought that was generated in the smaller group and was accepted as a whole by SPAC. And then, again, I think there's a sense of just really wanting to better understand what the City Council would love or SPAC to have as their focus, some role clarity there. And then even understanding, is there a communication that happens between other committees working in the community and is there a way to work together in a way that helps the process as a whole? So those are the things that we are presenting tonight. I would be more than happy for anyone on SPAC to add to what I've said tonight or, or the City Council to share with us their thoughts or ask us questions.
All right, before I start letting the council jump in, I want to maybe open it up to see if there's discussion points or any additional observations from, from the S-PAC members. All right, Leonard.
Thank you. And thank you for the introductions. Mr. Lind, I, I wanted to ask about this possible police oversight commission. It sounds like the mission of an oversight commission might have some overlap with the Police Advisory Committee. How, how would you define the roles of each, of each body, the advisory committee and the oversight commission? And would the oversight commission have more of a binding role to play in the policies set forth by the, by the Police Department?
Thank you, I'm going to ask if one of the three teams members that were working on this that had more in-depth conversation has a, a sense of that, or would like to give a thought to that? Either Michael, Brittany, or Jen, are one of you capable or willing to talk about that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a stab once I get my, my screen is sort of jumping in and out, so I can't see who is and isn't speaking. When I started with SPAC, Merrily was the council representative. We were more or less a glorified neighborhood watch reporting group. And I think Merrily would, would confirm that. And then we disbanded during COVID. And then after the incident up in the Thurston neighborhood, which I'm a part, Joe's a part, we got called back in and we hit the, hit the ground running. And for the first time, we started taking a lot of feedback from the public. And most of that feedback initially and ongoingly was at times hostile. I think we did a good job of de-escalating, trying to clarify a lot of the public input. During that time, we tried to define what the purpose of SPAC was. It was more or less after we did our research, a policy review committee. Now, the public is asking for the police oversight commission. And that's not our preview, we would not do that. And that would be up to you guys to decide if we need it and what it would look like. I think there are a lot of public testimony towards us that we really can't respond to other than, you know, we have a great new chief who's taken notes. But we thought that process should go to you guys and maybe formally. So I'm not sure what you would want, but it would be your preview to, to do what you want.
So I guess the, the next question would be advisory versus oversight. So would oversight, would, would an oversight commission have any input into setting the policies of the Police Department?
So Leonard, I don't know, and I'm looking at S-PAC, right? Like, I think they just gave us that simple, a simple bullet point. So I think, I think that was just a them summarizing what they've heard in the public, in public comment for probably the next, for the last, for the last six months. Sure. And my, I guess my recommendation is we sort of die, you know, dive into this conversation is I don't know that there's enough information that, as it's presented in, in their reports to really drive, dive into a discussion about that tonight. And I want to remind folks that if, I think in April, we have a pretty big police update coming that includes the use of force report plus probably, you know, the updates of the other projects that they're working on. And if people are interested in more information, then I would say maybe we, we pump the conversation until we have the broader police conversation.
Well, let, let me just say on general terms, I would certainly welcome the idea of an oversight commission, depending on the role that we approved for it.
Merrily.
Hi, yes, Michael, we, we've been, we've been, we're on S-PAC a long time. But I think the original idea was before the name was changed was the Police Planning Task Force. And the original plan for it was to set up a strategic plan for the Police Department and work your way, work its way through. When I was the liaison, along with getting the reports from the Police Department and, you know, the combinations, the complaints and that that came through like, like Michael was referring to. But we completed the strategic plan, the Police Department completed a strategic plan just before Michael came on to S-PAC and just before, and as we changed the name to the Springfield Police Advisory Committee. At that point, the idea was to set up a new strategic plan to work through. And then, as we know, and what has occurred over the last few years, that was strategic plan kind of got down in the list in, in order to take care of more urgent, more urgent matters and respond to comments and concerns that were coming in. I, I just gave a very brief response to Leonard and, and in light with of what the mayor mentioned. I think more information needs to be brought about in, from various perspectives when it comes to the setting up of a advisory, a oversight commission. My, my questions that I wrote down were, what in the, in your, your last set of questions, what would SPAC share with other committees? There, you mentioned what would, you know, what, what do they look at as being, what would, what would you share? And, and what, what do you define as broader civic engagement?
So Barry or somebody on S-PAC, you want to take that?
Jen, I'm going to ask you if you would, because I, I, I think that you had some input on that and I think you'll state it much clearer than me, if you would.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Sharon. I think that our thought on that was our, after inviting in some additional information about our charge and really understanding it as more of a community involvement committee and sort of community awareness. So what we have worked on was, and you'll see in our report, elevating policies on a more regular basis and bringing them forward. And I think our goal and, and one of the things that we'll talk about as we move forward in the SPAC's plans for this coming year is a commitment of the individual members to make sure that we're really involving in our community in, hey, we're going to be discussing this police policy, how does that impact you? So that we can come back and share that with the Police Department. This committee is really more about sharing community feedback. And so I think that when they were talking, when the initial conversation came up about other committees, for example, if there is discussion or a new police policy around or maybe campaign around motor vehicle accidents or the intersection of, you know, bicycle and pedestrian. If we enter committed to engaging more with our counterparts on other committees, we would have broader input to bring back and share with the Police Department about how those policies impact our community and give them, you know, food for thought as they continue moving those policies forward in their process. Again, we're, we're more of elevating those policies so that we're having that discussion in the public, inviting the public in to review and, and think about those policies. And so I think that we thought of that as a natural expansion with other groups. Hey, Lions Club, did you know that the SPAC exists? And here's the set of policies that we intend to publicly discuss this year. Let us know if there's, if you have thoughts or interests or things like that. I think that's what I believe our goal was when we were talking about that bullet.
I, I, I understand where you're coming from. My concern is the, that my concern combines your goal setting for the year or being a right, and I totally, I, because I was, I was on the SPAC on Police Plan Task Force when Chief Donnie was trying to balance out the membership of the committee. And so I'm glad to see the representatives we have and how much input we can get from the different parts of our community. Because I, I think that's very important. But at the same time, I also am cautious that what is going out from your committee is what is, I, I, I legitimate isn't the word I'm looking for, but it's along that line. It needs, there needs to be a, there needs to be a stamp on it that it's okay for you to go out and, and take this point of view or it's okay to talk about these things. Part of, if this were to become part of your goal setting, and I'll make my comments now and then let everybody else talk. I would want to see it included in your minutes that we would get right away from your meetings, so the council is aware of what you might or might not, you know, be looking at doing. And I look at it, at it being a dual role, not only taking information out to the community, but also being ambassadorial for the Police Department. I think that's a very important dual role, that not only do you take out information and get information back, but I look at each one of you as an ambassador of the Police Department, because that's a position that you're in. And I think that's, I think it's a very vital combination. So I will.
Oh, go ahead, Michael, sorry.
I would like to jump in and say, you're absolutely right. And I think we've done an excellent job in that role. We've been taking public comments for not six months, but for a year and a half.
Hey, Michael.
Yeah.
Can we wait until Merrily's done and then we'll, we'll, we'll go over to you and work the queue?
That's.
I appreciate it, Michael.
I, I was just about done, but I thought, when I, when I put it in an itemization process, the first thing that I would put at the top of that list is the goal setting. And then work, work the way down through the list in an outline form, in a, in a project form. Okay, we've got our goal set for you, this is what we wanted to do. And part of those come from the policy that's set by, and the definition is set by the council. The council has the definition of what the purpose of SPAC is and what's, we know how it, how the commission, committee is defined. And so the, the goal setting involves that as well. So I'll stop there and let somebody else talk, thank you.
Okay, Michael, I, I know you've got some, you were next in the queue, so go ahead.
Oh no, that was it, I actually was agreeing with Merrily then.
Okay. Damian.
Hey, y'all. Just real quick, so you know, based on the, the makeup, you know, you have two identity-based positions. And you know, I think in my time in Oregon, we have a tendency to put, you know, one brown person or gay person and think that they cover all the bases of everything. And though I see some relevance, I see those positions potentially being burdened because they're supposed to represent everything, but that's literally impossible. And so I'm wondering, one, do we think that those positions, those specific ones still need to exist? And if we do, how do we strengthen their voices to where they're more intersectional and they represent a larger group of people? But on the flip side, not get burnt out and not be expected to speak for everybody who is religious or is a minority, if that makes any sense.
All right, so does somebody from the S-PAC want to take that one?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to chime in here, because as the cultural minority community representative, yeah, thank you. I, no, I really, I really appreciate your comments, Counselor Pitts. I've, I've only been in this position, I guess, actually like about a year and a half now since December of last year. And I, no, I, I think that my experience has been similar to what you're describing, right? I think that the position that I am in went in with really good intent in terms of wanting to have more representation on the committee. But yes, it can be a really tokenizing role. And, you know, I have, I have felt this kind of increased burden to, to represent populations that I am not, I, I can't, like you're saying, it's like I simply cannot represent it. And I've, and I think I've maybe brought this up at, at previous meetings in a, in a subtle way. But, you know, I would, I would really support these roles becoming more, I guess, embedded in our recruitment of a committee members as opposed to having to be a designated position.
All right, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. So maybe, I guess I interpret this as people that have got, for example, this, this commissioner oversight committee, whatever name you want to slap on it. Those are ideas that, per the report and per the subcommittee, came from people from, that have contacted us during their meetings, et cetera, and said, hey, we want this. And, and I, and they, they took it on and say, okay, well, let's, let's look at this and see what kind of recommendation. And I think really, that, that's not the committee's work. The committee should say, you know, that sounds like a great idea and I think you should definitely voice your opinion at, at, to the, directly to the council during work sessions or during a, or I should say not work sessions, during a council meeting. So that is coming from the individuals that think it's a good idea to the council and not place that on this committee as far as trying to make some sort of, hey, we heard about this and, and here, what do you think? And, and it's really, I think it makes it clunky. And that, and I, and I'm going to concur with the mayor in regards to, I think, where we, we're, I guess, if I can just gather from what he said and my, my own thoughts, is that we're make, the, the, the committee brought forward this idea, but we don't know who, we don't know how, we don't know what they'll do. We don't have any of this information. And, and the council still has a gurgitate, a ton of information that is yet to be brought forward. So I think that we are way ahead of the curve on this. We, and I would say that I hear the rec, you know, I hear the desires from some individuals in the community. I get it and, and we, anything, you know, we've talked about building something, well, we get those too, we consider those. So I think it's, I think it's early in the game. I think that we need to get a bunch more information and I think the council can take it from here. And I think the, the folks that were kind of put between a rock and a hard place on this, which I believe they were on this committee, because again, floundering around trying to figure, okay, what the heck are we doing? Or what are we supposed to do, what can we do, what, you know, how much authority do I have, how much I don't have? This whole thing is, I, and I apologize as a counselor to the committee members that I don't think, I don't think it's fair to any committee to have to feel as though you're trying to break new ground. So, you know, in that sense, the council's got a lot of work to do. We got to make things easier for committee members to get things done and accomplish things, at least feel as though they have some worth. And anyway, so I've rambled on, but, but as far as the individual members, we, we talked about that over several work sessions in regards to representation. It's, it, I think the, the gist of it is that it's not necessarily putting a job on an individual on a committee. It is allowing that part of our community to have a person that they would feel safe to go through or at least can, can relate to in some fashion, as opposed to complete strangers or complete different cultures, et cetera. So that is where that we kind of rounded out the committee in that manner to make the committee approachable to, for all aspects from our community. And that's what's the most important. And we were thinking about that years ago, that we realized that that is something that's very important and we have to have a spectrum across the community of, of, you know, who can, whose people can contact. So anyway, that's a lot, so. Don't you, yeah, Damian, really? Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, um, what I'm getting from all of this is that we are in some transition. And first, I would just want to, to call out my appreciation for the role that y'all have played over the past year, year and a half. Because I know that, you know, from, from the, the story that we are telling or the, the, the way that we are describing this committee, it has shifted over time, both internally because of what was needed and because of what the pressures that were happening externally. And I just wanted, I have appreciation for the fact that because we did have this committee and this has been a place for the public to come during some really tumultuous times and share their thoughts or see how things work. And you've also served as a, a transitional place for our new police chief. So all of that is very real and very messy, as Counselor Pishanary pointed out. And I think that's part of it is just sort of us saying that out loud, appreciating that you're trying to take all of that and come up with some recommendations. And really, what I get out of these recommendations is exactly what Counselor Pishanary said, which is like, it's on us to figure out what is the purpose of this committee and/or what sort of a committee do we need? And it's always helpful to look in government in terms of what does this, is, is this an advisory committee? Is this a, is this, who does this answer to? You know, we have committees that answer to the board or to the council. We have committees that are supposed to be advising the city manager or whomever. It's, it's on us to get really clear about what the purpose of the committee is, who it advises. And if in fact it is a liaison committee that's supposed to be interacting with the community, then, you know, Counselor Woodrow's right, we need to get really clear about what is, what is the authority there? Who speaks for what? We all have to get trained on when we get to say our minds and when we get to not. So I think it's just acknowledging that it's a messy place and that we are in transition both internally and because of pressures externally. And that we need to just sort of take a beat, think about it as an organization, what is the most useful thing going forward? And that's what I have to say about that.
Steve.
SPAC was a pretty quiet committee there for quite a while. And a few years ago, we had a major, major political, cultural change in our country and police issues came up. And it came to the point where there was a lot of lack of trust in police and in our city. I like to think that wasn't necessary to mistrust us, but we have to prove to the public that we are trustworthy. We have a new chief, he's making big differences out there. And I believe the public wants us to deal a bit more, a little bit more oversight on some issues that have been happening. And I'd like to make sure that we, we tell them that we hear them and we're going to try and do something like that. So I support some sort of overlay oversight committee. And hopefully, in the long run, we'll get the public to trust us, trust the police like they should.
Barry.
Barry.
I think this is understood, but I just wanted to be clear that, um. In our conversations, I don't believe SPAC is asking to be that oversight. We were simply asking. Is this something that city council believes is worth considering? I mean, it's, it's really, we're coming at it from just. That broad. And then again, I appreciate the comments. We are, I believe, still looking for some clarification. In, uh, from the city council on what they would have the SPAC to do because your, your observation is correct. The, the role changed dramatically in, in, in the last couple of years and we've been just trying to find our way through. And for right or wrong, we took the role of being listeners to the community because we thought that was a. A vital role for us to take that was helpful. Um, and so we continue to, uh, find our way. And are certainly. Wanting and, and appreciating the city council's, uh, um, leadership here.
So, um, Barry, I don't, yeah, I don't think we're reading this as, uh, the S pack is asking to be an oversight body. I think we're reading it as a, as you guys discussed it, as you sort of quantified where, where the public feedback is, you're asking us to consider that. And work in the reality is, you know, I don't know where we were, we're going to end up, but we would need to get a little, just a little bit more information. About that. And the, the other piece that I think is really important for, that I keep hearing between all, all the group of. Counselors is just a genuine gratitude for having to work through a really tough situation and, you know, being sort of flexible. To, to responding to the public because in a lot of ways, sometimes you listen, sometimes it was an avenue for the PD to. Help have dialogue for people. And sometimes it was to really push, uh, folks back towards us as the policymaking body in the city. And I, I think that's going to continue in understanding, when, when I read the report and just having you guys understand that role. Where as you take public comments, some of it can get answered there, but if it's policy issues, it really needs to come back to council and, you know, having you guys. Be more, I don't know if forceful is the right word, just helping people see where to access and get support from government, I think is really important. The other thing that I had written down is a lot of times I think about. Um, how things are supposed to work, right? Like, and maybe it's the system engineer in me is like, when you think, you know, the first thing is what is, what's supposed to happen? And what's actually happening right now. But I'm really interested in your goal setting process for coming back to that strategic plan. Um, that is a place in, you know, we've got new software for, you know, use of force issues and complaints. We've got, you know, we, we talked, we just talked about a drone pilot that's out there. Um, you know, please, you know, the, the police are concerned about staffing and we've got, you know, we've got the body cams and, you know, data that is out there. That is a place where you as a body can really work with, work with the police department. And, and a very helpful way to kind of get a next, what's the next five years going to be? And that would be something that I would be really interested in. It's kind of going back to your core mission, which is, one of them is to build a strategic plan for the. For, for the police. And the comment that I, that, uh, I guess the two other comments that I would have is. When I'm at a lot of boards and commissions and between, go out and talk to the community and support the community. Because there's coffee with the cop. I know the chief does, um, uh, community outreach all the time. It wouldn't be. I don't think it would be out of the ordinary to have somebody from S pack there to talk about the community role and what, what your guys' work would be. But we would just have to, you know, work through what that structure would look like. Um. Old Merrily and Corey brought up really good points, which is when you're out in the community, there's certain rules about, you know, how you represent yourself. And I think, I think that's, that's a valuable discussion to have because I can see a role, um, emerging for that. The library advisory board does something similar. Um, and then, you know, I know. I know the twenty twenty, like twenty twenty-two goals, right? That's a discussion that, you know, that, that, um, you guys as a body are going to have. Um, whatever, whatever additional goals you add to that list, um, I would just ask that you communicate them back. And kind of get us to head nod them that, okay, yeah, we added three more goals, you know, and we, and we as a board, you know, we as a council kind of go, okay. That makes sense. Um, that's an important check in, you know, that's one of the reasons why, you know, uh, we have a council liaison. Is to help guide you guys through and about where the council actually is. And, you know. When, when I think about the rest of the year, just understand like police policy issues and update about the work that's happening in the police department's going to happen. At least quarterly, right? So there is opportunities for you to both plug in and share additional information. As we sort of tackle some of these bigger policy issues. Merrily.
Um, yes, I, I just want a, a couple of things. One, I was remiss in not saying thank you. I know what you've gone through for the last couple of years. Um, we've paid attention. We may not have had said much, but we were paying attention. And, um, and I thank you because you, you could have walked away and said. I, that's not my, I didn't sign on for this and you could have taken and walked away. And you didn't, you stuck in there, you hung in there. And showed how much you care about the community, um, as a whole. And so I do thank you for that. One of the things that I noticed. Was that a year and a half ago, you had close to a hundred and fifty people listening in as attendees. The last one had fourteen. You're doing something right, you know, as far as responding to people. Um, and helping us in, we have the response. I think the trust is building, is rebuilding. Um, the police planning tasks for strategic goal was to get the jails set up. And, and they, and that was the, almost the endpoint of that strategic plan. And once it got up and was running. Now the strategic plan looks forward and looks to the future and looks to all the different parts of. This new age, this transition and how that can move forward. And you guys are in a prime role for being able to help us. Get that done. So I, I look forward to that. And like I said, I, I wanted to say I was remiss not saying thank you, but I looked at those. Uh, minutes. I saw how many people were basically knocking at your door. And then you got it down to a point of where you, you didn't have so many people so alarmed and, uh, and pressuring. And I thank you for that, that would, I noticed that.
Alright. I'm looking around and I think we've been through all the comments. Um, for the S pack folks, do you have any other point that you maybe would want us to come, kind of come back to? Go ahead, Michael.
I just want to say that Counselor Pictionary has done a great job of keeping us on task. And letting us know where boundaries are and letting members of the community, so that, that shouldn't be overlooked. And why Joe and I clash once in a while, I really appreciate, appreciate his understanding of the process.
Thank you, Michael. Likewise. Well, um, alright, so I think that is going to be it. Um, so we've been through all the content, really the ask from, uh, from S pack is to come back. With, with those couple of goals that we had, that we had discussed, including anything else that you might add. And then work with, with Counselor Pictionary to get them back, back to us so that we have some sort of eyes on them. And then from a, from a staff perspective, I think we're just going to get more information about the, the oversight question when we meet. What was it? Go ahead, Nancy.
I just wanted to, um, chime in briefly. First, thank you to, uh, the advisory committee for all of the work that you've done. And your commitment to our police department and also to Chief Shearer, who's been remarkable in, as our chief. And I, um, am so honored that he's with us. Um, you know, sometimes when you're looking at an issue. Um, you can get a little bit, um, focused on one particular outcome. And I guess as we continue to explore this feedback, I would just, uh, encourage us to look at. You know, maybe ask ourselves some questions. Overall, you know, what is the goal that we are attempting to achieve? Um, what are the issues that we're facing? And then what are all the ways that we can address this? You know, um, an advisory committee is, is one way. There's, there's a lot of other ways we, we would want to explore. An advisory committee also takes on, there's, I've seen a number of configurations of how that would work. So it's complex. Um, and I just want to make sure that we're not limiting our thinking to one particular outcome. When there's a lot of, um, good dialogue to be had on this.
I think that is a really good feedback. And so, um, when is the, uh, the, the police update? Is that the eleventh of April?
Correct.
Okay, so it sounds like we, we're going to have the police work session, the eleventh of April, and then we're going to get into use of force. Um, the annual use of force update, a little bit more information about this. And then we had, if my memory serves. Maybe thirty things, you know, that are, were process improvement and policy updates, um, from last year that we're going to get an update on. Um, with that, um, really appreciate S pack, you, you folks joining us. You're the second group to, uh, meet with the city council since planning commission in the fall. So thank you so much for being a little bit of our guinea pig as we sort of figure out how to do these joint sessions over the, the, the virtual environment. Um, then I am going to adjourn us. We will be back in fifteen minutes for the regular session. So, uh, we will see you then. Thank you. We are adjourned. Do you see Pishet? AJ, okay, I'm going to text him and say we're getting started. Oh, there you go. Alright, I'm going to call the regular, uh, meeting of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
Uh, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pleasure, Legion.
United States of America.
Public.
Nation under God, indivisible.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online. To please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There are two I times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you're attending in person. Please complete the request card to speak located at the entrance of the council chambers and give them the, the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet or a smartphone or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. We will, anybody that is in the city council chambers. And then anyone who has raised their virtual hand. Before I call the first item, Neil, could you tell us how many people are joining us in Zoom land?
Yes, Mayor, we have twenty-six participants total online and thirteen here in the council chambers.
Thank you. First item, please.
First item is the consent calendar.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Counselor Mo, seconded by Counselor Pictionary to approve the consent calendar. Uh, Neil, pretty follow, uh, vote, please.
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Alright.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
The vote passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Uh, next item, we have one public hearing this evening. Public hearing number one is fiscal year twenty-two supplemental budget three and appropriations transfer. Uh, resolution number one, a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds, general, street, special revenue. Building code, fire, local option levy, regional wastewater capital, street capital, sanitary sewer operations, regional wastewater. Ambulance, booth Kelly and vehicle and equipment and authorizing the transfer of appropriations within the general fund from contingency expense. To police department operating expense. Neil Obringer is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, uh, this is the third supplemental budget of FY twenty-two. I'm happy to take any questions you may have on the specific requests outlined in the packet tonight. Uh, but first I do want to make note of a, a couple of quick items. Uh, first, uh, the packet describes. Two hundred and fifty thousand in the Booth Kelly Fund for a facility assessment and possible demolition of the Carter Building. Um, however, since this packet was put together, uh, we've learned more about the condition of that facility. Um, and so now we, we really know that a facility assessment is no longer needed. Uh, the two hundred and fifty thousand will be used for demolition of the facility, but not a, uh, an assessment. Uh, so that's the first item. Uh, second is I, I want to make note of a typo in exhibit A of the resolution. So that's, uh, attachment two. Page four of seven in your packet. Um, in the police local option levy fund, legal services is listed twice. Um, in the list of departments, uh, one of those two, the, the second instance, um, should be the police department. Um, so this error has been corrected in a revised version of the resolution. And so that I just ask when, uh. Uh, stating the motion for this item that the council moves to adopt the resolution as corrected. So without, I'm happy to take any questions.
Leonard.
Um, Neil, I heard you, uh, say that the Carter, uh, building was no longer necessary. I think. The, the question that we had was whether it was structurally sound. Can you speak to that?
My understanding is, uh, it's, it's not structurally sound. The Carter Building facility assessment is no longer needed. And I, I believe that, um, due to the, the structure, uh, and the condition, uh, they're moving forward with the process of demolition. But, um, if, if you want more details and I'm able to provide them, I'm sure we can, um, gather some additional information for you.
Yeah, I guess, uh, so you said that there was, uh, no longer, it was no longer necessary to do an assessment of the soundness of the building?
My understanding is that we know enough at this point and that the condition of the facility is, is poor enough. Um, that they, uh, the, the money, you know, necessary to, to basically move forward with an assessment is, is unnecessary. We, we know the condition, we know that we need to move forward with the demolition.
Neil Wadadi.
Yeah, we, we did have an engineer look at the building. There was a major trust failure, so there's scaffolding. Um, and braces keeping the building up at this point. Um, so it is, uh, not only. A, um, assessment is not needed, but it looks like an emergency, um, can be used to remove the building and do the demo and tear down at this.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Alright, um, then I am going to open the public hearing. And see if anybody wants to make comments to this item.
Mayor, we don't see any hands online or anyone here in the room.
Alright, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And then Steve.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt resolution number one.
Hang on one second. I think you have to move it as corrected.
So, okay, that's correct. Okay, I'll correct your, I make a, I make a, a motion that we. Adopt resolution number one as correct.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution number one. Uh, Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Alright.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Hi, thank you.
Alright, the motion passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is business from the audience.
Alright, so as I discussed earlier, um, we, we do have folks in the, in the chamber. I'm going to call them first. If you are at home or online and want to testify, please start putting your hands up so Neil can track you in the queue. The first person to speak is Matt Bryson. Um, could you join us up here and give us, uh, your name and location in the city? For the record, please. And then you have three minutes.
My name is Matt Bryson, three eighty-eight Q Street, Springfield.
Alright, go ahead.
My name is Matt Bryson, president of Metco Investment Realty, Inc. And I, along with numerous property business owners, we represent. That will be negatively impacted. Want to make it clear to this council, to the, this council's members, we strongly oppose your approval. Of the Main Street project as it's been proposed. The proposal flat out displaces popular businesses and employment, which are important to the community. For example, and, and people need to be aware, the shopping center under our prior purview on forty, the corner of forty-second and Main. Where a two-lane roundabout is proposed, appears to be significantly impact or eliminate two viable eateries. A coffee stand, a national bank yosk, along with numerous personal, personnel they employ at this location. With this, in the same center, parking spaces will be reduced to the extent current and future infill opportunities. Creating viable small business and local jobs may be restricted. This proposal restricts critical access along the entire corridor, placing undue hardships on both residents and small businesses. For example, residents and several residential properties under our purview will be unnecessarily forced to wrong to vet correction. When turning out of the residence and faced with a choice of committing a dangerous U-turn during rush hour or going blocks out of their way to fight through a confusing roundabout just to get to and from work. On the same note, small businesses will no longer suffer, will no doubt suffer the ill effects of lost regular and potential customers due to lack of ease of accessibility, reduce parking from proposed rightaways. And overall in can be an overall convenience. All critical elements have success to a small business in a community commercially zoned corridor such as the majority of Main Street. In summary, this plan as proposed could have a devastatingly negative long term effect on Springfield residents, businesses, and the public in general. When we believe there are far less impactful alternatives that could be implemented and at far less taxpayer expense to reach citizen objectives of the public safety. I implore you to send this proposal back to the drawing board or put it to a citizen vote and let the people decide. Thank you for your time. So have an email from the property owner of question. We own the shopping center on Forty Second and Main Street, and we're very strongly opposed to the Main Street facility plan. Something of this type.
Matt was. I your your three minutes is up. Could you could you give a copy of that email to Neil Ladati and then he'll do and he can distribute it to us? Yes. Thank you so much. Thanks for your time. Uh Chris Stewart.
Heather. Um my name's Chris Stewart. I am a twenty two year resident of Springfield. I praise my family here. Apparently operate eight Dutch Bros coffees in the valley. This proposal that you are coming up with will eliminate thirty of my employees. Immediately and another thirty will impact directly as well at a different location. I want to tell you a little bit more about me and what I've done. Uh I've I've also uh my company has donated over a million dollars to local community. Charitable places in this area, Lane County, uh food for Lane County. We just did eleven thousand five hundred on Friday. So this is huge impact on my people. And this company in in this whole community. I've got I've got six or seven questions that I or ten questions that I'm gonna try and get through in three minutes. If not, I'm gonna send up my office manager. Will help me finish up for thirty three minutes, so bear with me. My first question is you stayed on that report that just came out recently. There's a hundred nine page report. I read it yesterday. I didn't know about any of this till Friday. My glasses are steaming up. I can't see. Says it during that report, you guys engaged or people actually engaged all active parties. I was not informed of anything until Friday. I knew you guys were doing something, but with COVID and everything that's going on, nobody knows what you guys are doing and what this whole thing, nobody knows. As you can see, there's nobody here. Nobody knows. I want to know for the record who you've contacted and and how and when who you have contacted for this report or for everything that's going on. How many businesses along this corridor will be eliminated and how many people will lose their job as the result of this project? Next question is, what is the financial impact to the businesses and customers who do not have time to navigate additional barriers and return back to the place of business and then back to the direction of travel they originally headed? What who where's the information that proves that you this is not going to be impacted? In the areas where the road's gonna be expanded over ninety feet or at ninety feet, there are several places, businesses that the sidewalk is gonna go right up the edge of the building. Now, in my past, I've noticed that you have to have a six or eight foot. I can't remember exactly what it is. Right away. If those buildings are inside that right away, will they have to be destroyed? I guess I'm out of time. Hopefully, if you can find time for Addie Campbell to come up and finish up my questions.
Yes, um thank you. Um we're gonna have June in between and then we'll have her up.
Okay, thanks.
If if you're okay with me changing the order, all right, then we will bring up Addie Campbell.
Alright, Addie Campbell, Office Manager, Dutch Bros Coffee. So I'm just gonna continue where he left off. So based on the initial site plan on page eighty one, our business located on Forty Second and Main would be eliminated. We'd like to know how does the city plan to compensate our thirty plus employees and our company for the loss of wages and the long term income, the long term income to our company. Uh what other pre-existing infrastructure issues will the city be resolving with the implementation of this project? If there are any pre-existing infrastructure issues that are identified, will the city utilize federal taxpayer dollars to bypass city budget with this project? Who from the city is going to tell our thirty plus employees that they no longer have jobs? Or is that gonna be on us? Why would anyone want to start or maintain a business along Main Street that only will accommodate half the traffic or complicated ingress or egress to access the business, including delivery of product? Chris has been a owner of a business for twenty two years. It's been his experience that if you make it hard to enter or leave a place of business, peaceful will not patronize your business or that part of the city. He went through that on Mohawk when they put in a barrier there. There was some major adjustments made there. When moving public utilities, how long will businesses along Main Street be closed and or inconvenienced? What are the financial impacts on the business community when current size freight trucks will have to stage or use smaller vehicles for the last mile? And who will pay for the inconvenience? What will the environmental environmental impact of the additional mileage required for these freight deliveries be? Where will the staging areas be? Who will pay for them? Who will coordinate all the deliveries, including the equipment needed to move the product? And this is a potential logistical like nightmare. What would the draw be to start a new business on Main Street in Springfield with complicated road that does not provide easy access? Is documented documented that the city will not use this project to pursue a future EMX or lane transit project? Further impacting the tax po- taxpayers or Springfield or Lane County, is it documented as part of this project? Responsible business owners should not have to suffer the consequences of a major change that impacts long term financial impact of not only their but their employer's financial success. Because a few are unable to navigate the current roadways successfully. Could this money be better spent on other traffic control resources, including highway or city traffic control saturations? When you look at the mobility statistics, it pencils out to an average of eighteen thousand average cars per day, a hundred and twenty six thousand per week, or one point three injury crashes per week. Please justify how these low statistics justify a hundred and fifty million dollar project. And how many crashes per year occur on the Hayden Bridge Roundabout? And where does the public find that info?
Thank you.
Thank you. I know I went over. Appreciate it.
June Father Gil.
June Father Gil, um three one seven thirtieth street on not right off main. So it's interesting to hear their their concerns. Anyway, um we've sent you a letter. I'm with Springfield Shelter Rights Alliance tonight. And we sent you a letter not too long ago, the eight around the eighth of February. And I'm just here to remind you of that letter and ask that you um consider having the um work sessions that we're suggesting to look at the needs and options for unhoused folks in our community. I just came from Egan Warming Center at the Memorial Building. And if that building's not being used, where will we have an Egan Warming Center? And other other concerns that were in the letter. Some things that don't involve money, they involve you the making decisions to allow for more options for some of us trying to do things for how unhoused people. And some things have to do with with spending money. But anyway, we'd love to have you have a work session focused just on the needs and the concerns of them unhoused in the community. So um also, thank you for your session. Last time I was here last week, boy, you've seen me a lot this. Um I appreciate the work that you're doing on those designations, those 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 funding choices. Uh I'll be sending you more information soon about the Ant Heart program and what it's all about. Some of the some some of you were asking questions. And also Everett, um who are in the pastor is um gonna be responding to some of the thing concerns you had. So look forward to hearing more from not just me, but from all these things. So thank you and please have that work session and help us to help each help you do a better job with unhoused people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Neil, do we have, we're ready to switch to online folks or is there anybody in the queue?
Yes, Mayor, we have one hand up at this point. And uh looks like we're getting a couple. So Lizzie Utterback is your first speaker. S J Lore will be next. And Lizzie, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you. This is Lizzie Utterback from Ward three. Um I wanna uh try to stay on topic with my planned comment, but I feel compelled spiritually, religiously to state that when we talk about changes to Main Street, the only concern should be to keep people from getting killed, to keep little kids from getting run over by cars. That should be the priority over anything else. Telling an employee they are laid off, which I don't even know if that's a legitimate concern or not, is nowhere near equivalent to telling a parent their child has been killed. Oh, my gosh. Okay, I really wanted to keep it positive tonight. My planned comment uh was really uh to share appreciation. I know I normally come to you with criticisms and concerns, uh but like I said, I just I had to say that. Uh so now to the the appreciation part of my comment, I really uh want to share my appreciation for the work the Springfield Police Advisory Committee has done to prepare and present their annual report. Particularly, I am grateful for the subcommittee members that were charged with drafting the report. Um during the SPAC meeting earlier this month, I observed the committee uh work to finalize their report, which was presented earlier tonight during the work session. Um as you know, this report includes a recommendation that the city implement a police oversight body, which I strongly support. And I hope the council will take the next steps to make the committee's recommendation a reality, because we sorely need any and every mechanism we can get that will lead to oversight and transparency. Uh thank you so much.
Mayor, the next speaker is S J Lore, and we have no one else in the queue at this point. And S J, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Perfect. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
We can.
Awesome. I'm in Ward four and um I appreciate everything that Lizzie had said. Um unfortunately, mine comes with a little more negative negativity. Um kinda what my feel for listening to you guys um taking in what the S P A C committee had brought to you. Um I was kind of a little bit disheartened by the responses or lack of responses. Um you know for they need to change their name. Um because from a community standpoint, you know, when I'm browsing the internet in Springfield and looking up information of, you know, where can I go to make my voice heard when it comes to wanting change for our community, um splee the Springfield Police Advisory Committee sounds really inviting. And if their job is to just handle policy and look at reviews for policy changes, um that's what they're called isn't really appropriate, I believe. Um it's uh they're definitely not the venue to hear public concerns and I just have to give them major props over the last handful of months for taking in um the community's comments. And I feel like they have done a fabulous job by trying to say, hey, you know, we're taking all this information. What are we supposed to do with it? And I don't feel that that was really recognized this evening. Um so I'm kind of disappointed in the council in that aspect. Um I would like to um bring up that Springfield should not be known as a sundowntown. We should not be sticking in the past. We need to be moving forward. We need to be inclusive. And we really need to kind of step it up if we want to keep families in the area and or attract more people to um our part of Lane County. Um I would really love if um the city council would maybe put a little bit more effort into moving progress. Um just forward progress would be great. Um there's a clear disregard for public comment and concerns. And um I would really appreciate it if you guys really took the time to take into consideration that we as a community may not hop on every time you guys have a meeting, because it's exhausting trying to communicate that we are would like to advocate for change. And um the city council doesn't really seem to take that very well um in order to kind of push back comments to move forward. And I just, you know, it's a very respectful position that you were all in and I would like it um if we made a little bit more commitment to moving forward and listening and making positive changes. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, we have one additional hand up. That speaker is Monica Olson. And Monica, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to uh quickly mirror that future forward is there being a civilian review board in every jurisdiction um nationwide? So that we can maintain transparency all over the country, not.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Monica. Could you state your name and where you're located for for the record, please?
Oh, Monica Olson, Ward floor.
Oh, thank you so much. Go ahead.
And um yes, just uh future forward is there being civilian review board in every jurisdiction maintaining, you know, transparency all over the country, not just here. There's you know, in Springfield could lead the way in some regards to that that happened. And I just want to make make it clear that we have the opportunity right now to make that happen and leave it at that.
Is that all you had, Monica?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, we have no other speakers.
Okay, um we have council response next before I open it up to make P let uh people have comments. Um I'm I'm probably gonna need a little bit more guidance, Nancy or Mary Bridget, especially about this Main Street item, since it's still open i- in front of the planning commission as far as how like I think the record's still open. So if you could help us about the, you know, how much we we can comment and discuss, that would be great.
I'll let Mary Bridget address the legal issue uh that you just posed, but I I do want to encourage people that are in the audience, either here in the chamber or remotely. Um we do have a dedicated webpage for this project. The website address is rmainstreetspringfield.org. R as in O U R. And I will turn this over to Mary Bridget.
Mary. Uh thanks. Thank you, Nancy. Um from a legal perspective, this is a legislative matter. It's not quasi judicial, so the council has more flexibility to hear um comments and engage with the public about this. However, it's still in the process with the planning commission. So uh like Nancy had talked about, um there is a website where people can put in additional comments. And then we'll inform the staff running this project that people came to council tonight, so they're aware of those comments. Um the council could respond um to this because it's a legislative matter. So if someone wants to decide to make some response to the public comments, they can, but they're not required to. And then just to encourage, um thank people for their participation and encourage them to circle back into the process with the planning commission.
And okay, so could you uh clarify, Mary Bridget, like that it all the testimony we took tonight is gonna get forwarded on uh to the planning commission for the record? Okay, so could you clarify, Mary Bridget, like that all the testimony we took tonight is going to get forwarded on to the planning commission for the record?
That is correct. So if people aren't able to get back into the planning commission process, we can make sure that this information is forwarded to the planning commission's record.
Right, thank you.
Yes, basically that follows pretty much what I had in mind to say. I appreciate, I listened closely to Matt and Chris and Addie. I appreciate everything that they had to say. I think it's important for us to hear it. I would like to hear it from anybody. I would like to hear what anybody else has to say. I am discouraged to think that there's people out there that haven't felt like they've been heard. So I would very much like to have them voice their feelings and their, and their ideas and regards to this and have it get through to the planning commission. So. Anything they can get out there and get on their record, I would, I would really love to, to encourage them to do that. Eventually it comes back around to us. Is that correct? After the planning commission, it comes back around to council. Is that correct?
You know, I believe it does come back to you that this issue will, the Main Street will come back to the council. I believe that is correct.
Okay, well, that's, I like I said, I just can, with the, with the situation that it's in right now with commission. I don't want to get off, off field with this, but I do want to encourage, you know, as many people as you've got out there that have things to say. Please, please get that information out to us. Thank you.
Joe.
Yes, thank you. I want to reiterate or echo what, what Counselor Woodrow just said. I think it's very important. In fact, I think it's, I think there is a certain population, excuse me, or pretty good sized population. That don't realize that by them on Facebook or social media voicing their concerns. It doesn't count. They, they need to make sure that those concerns are sent up to the city in the, in a proper way through the links. There's plenty of links. There's plenty of ways to get a hold of the city. And get that on the record. I'm a little dismayed as to hearing some of the concerns. It seems like those type of topics would have been. Addressed much a long time ago. So I do want to continue to hear what people's concerns are and I want to be able to hear. What the responses are. So that way, when I'm asked the very same questions that I just heard. With somebody having those concerns, I'm going to have a legit answer for them. Right now, I don't have answers to many of the questions that are being posed out there to me. So. I do appreciate those folks coming forward and I, I don't want to. I can't over emphasize the need to have as much public input as possible. Cause I don't want to be part of a huge decision like that and find out later or after the fact that people feel as though they weren't heard. And it doesn't matter how many people, just if they feel that they weren't, they were unheard, then. Then we fail. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Leonard?
Yes, I'd like to thank Monica Olson and SJ Lore and Lizzie Utterback for speaking out. The, despite appearances, sometimes the council does certainly welcome public comment on. Police issues and I, I would argue that public comment has played a large role in some of the changes that have happened in the department here in Springfield. June Father Gill, thank you for your comments. I eagerly await more information on Ansart. And on, on all of the programs that are being considered for the, for this sort of infusion of money that we've got right now. And when you, when, when you talk to the pastor of Everett Methodist, then be sure and offer my regards, will you? Also, Addie Campbell and Chris and Matt Bryce, and thank you for your comments and we are, we're certainly carefully considering those two. I, there is one. One issue that I would like to address right now, and that is I heard that the strip mall, the, the shopping center at 42nd and Main would have to be closed in order to. Implement the roundabout of 42nd and Main. Does, can anyone speak to that with any kind of authority? We, I, we may not have the right people here tonight. I don't know.
Neil.
Counselor, I think that will be part of the, the 10 questions that we received in the letter. We'll, we'll get proper answers to those.
Yeah, and, and I'm sure that the staff is very diligent in getting these answers to the, to the public after they pose them and. There, some of them I suspect are probably not going to have hard answers. The financial impact on the community. I, I think we can make projections, but they're not going to be completely accurate, of course. So I, I'm looking forward to, to seeing the answers from the staff myself. Thanks.
Damian.
Hey y'all. First of all, I want to say thank you all for sharing. It's, it's not always easy. But, but here are a couple of things that I want everybody to think about. I'm not, I'm not targeting any specific person or any group or anything, but. The culture of Oregon is to often speak for, not speak of. And so. I know when I first got into council, there was a lot of people speaking for folks of color, blah, 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 but they never did anything to. Get them to these meetings and I understand for various reasons why not, but. Let's always be careful not to speak for people, but speak of people and create platforms for them to speak for themselves. Cause let me tell you, it does not happen here. Especially for Asian minorities. It does not. I don't care what you say. All right. To, let's be cognizant to. Reflect before we react. I think it's real easy for humans to act out of anger or out of fear. But if they took the time to just do a little reflection, whether it's internal or just. On the situation, then the outcome will be different and realize that having that type of reaction is very, very dangerous to a lot of people. And so please just think about this. And once again, I repeat, I'm not targeting anybody. But this is my experience living here and I'm not going to let anybody say that I'm wrong. All right. But you know, let's come together. Let's think about what community means. I think that definition is completely different for a lot of us. And like I said, I know we're going to move, yeah, move forward as a move together, realize that we are going to agree on a lot of things, but. Let's not be petty and let's try to get past our shortcomings that we might see within each other because. Diversity of opinions is also just as important as diversity, racial diversity. And honestly, you're going to get diversity in opinions way quicker than you're ever going to get racial diversity in Springfield. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Steve, gentleman lady in the, in the back of the room that hadn't heard about the Thursday, Main Street project. City really has been trying to get the word out there and I apologize. You should have known, you will know. And so it happened. I'm sorry it happened.
All right, thank you. Um, the one comment I wanted to make specifically to Main Street was just to echo a lot of the importance of just public testimony. And it's in front of planning commission right now. And the way that we end up with a plan. That it works for Springfield is for people to continue to take comments and get them. Into the record so that they're considered like, like all public testimony. Every piece is sort of weighed and considered by all the different bodies out here. So please, if you have not given comment about it. Take the time and share your, your feedback about the Main Street safety plan. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Mayor, any other business from the city council?
Merrily.
What's the deadline for the testimony going to planning commission?
Ooh, that is a good question. Nancy or Mary Bridget, do we know when?
I think 3:15 maybe.
I'm looking over AJ who kind of keeps our overall schedule. Do you have the, the next, I don't have it in front of me, Mayor. I'd have to get it back to him.
Um, though, so it sounds like we will.
They've got the record open, so.
They're working on it right now. So it may be an email, Merrily, that we get back about what, 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 how long the record's open.
Okay, I just want to make sure people were aware of what the deadline would be.
All right, anybody else? Okay, next item, please.
Any business from the city manager?
No business this evening. Thank you.
And any business from the city attorney?
No additional business tonight.
All right, thank you, everybody. I'm going to adjourn us. Have a good night.